Work through the.
Okay, well, it is 6:09 by my watch and we'll call to order the regular meeting, the regular October 4th meeting of the Norfolk Report at. The first item on our agenda is public comments. We do welcome public comments and I'm always happy to, we're always happy to listen. We ask that people limit their comments to five minutes and please know that it is our policy to, to, to listen, but not to respond to public comments right away. So with that said, would anyone like to speak? Paige, Kalen says she can't hear you. Can you move closer to a microphone?
I was asked to speak on behalf of Erica McLeary, a former teacher who couldn't be here tonight because she's in school. So these are not my words, but I did want to honor her request. Obviously, I am not Erica McLeary. And I was, I was a Botel teacher up until the end of last school year. I attended last month's board meeting and I was disappointed to hear how the previous staff was portrayed. It was disheartening to hear that our reasons for leaving were grouped into excuses like they didn't like multi-age teaching or they didn't like their grade level assignment. For weeks, I worked on my exit survey to ensure it was very clear and that the reason I was leaving went far beyond the reasons given in last one shooting. I've spoken to members of the public and members of the board to provide further evidence of the negativity and poor decision making that circulated the school over the last three years that I was a staff member. No teacher should ever want to leave a school like Botel. It's a school with an amazing community, small class sizes and endless resources. Should have staff that want to stay rather than leaving in droves. This school has yet to hire a reading specialist and instead puts the most fragile readers into untrained staff, under trained. They continue to push the improper use of multi-age classrooms onto teachers and students every day, leaving many students in the dust while not providing enough opportunity for the highest functioning learners. Other schools in this area are able to do it in a meaningful way. What I've mentioned thus far is just the tip of the iceberg. And as I mentioned previously, I personally have worked tirelessly to provide reasoning and evidence about why the public school or why the public should be concerned with what's happening within these walls. Although I'm no longer a staff member here, I'll always want what's best for the students and families of this community. This is why myself and others will keep fighting this fight until our voices are heard. I welcome any further conversation or questions that anyone else may have in the future. And I'll let other people talk.
Thank you. I'm looking at my sound guy, see if that's something he can whip up. Okay, Peter, please stand in for Jack.
One thing we talked about last week or last month were rumors. So a few of us were talking, we're asking, is there a strategic three-year plan that the board has for the Botel School System? And is it available to the public?
Kim?
I don't have anything as well written as that. There's just a lot of thoughts that have come out of me over the last hour ago. But these are a lot of things that have been in my head for several years now. After the last meeting, I had a few of the parents come, ask me if I would be willing to speak up. I don't have a child here anymore. But over the last 12 years, I have had two children go through this school system. And I have to say that initially, when I started coming here 12 years ago, the school was a very important part of this community. We were very proud of it. I actually moved here because of the reputation the school had. I was also very impressed, not only with how the school was looked upon by the community, but the actual community that was in the school. The teachers, the support staff, the administration, the board of ed, the kids. It was even the parents that volunteered there here were a tight community. And I don't see that anymore. For the last five or six years, I would say there's been a significant change in the feeling in this school. It's hard to put details into it, but it's been obvious that a lot of the programs that involve the parents were, were disintegrated. They no longer exist. We used to volunteer for centers. We used to come in here and we were welcomed to have parties within the classroom for the holidays, for the kids. The teachers welcomed us. It really pulled the school together. That no longer exists here. I would have to say that's my warm and fuzzy for my feelings here. The academics I had seen just fall apart. When my son went through this program, there was structured, there was a program, there was homework. We got to see how our children were doing. We got to see what they brought home, what they were learning, how they were doing it, whether or not they could do it. We saw grades come home, knowing that the teachers were evaluating their assignments. My daughter went through here, what's eight years? I can probably count on my two hands that structured homework came home that she had to do and turned back in. Reading at home is not a homework assignment, especially if you are not following up with it, asking questions about it and expecting them to write and learn what they read. Our testing scores are dropping. I, I, I even know, and I'm going to speak specifically. I watched Chris Snyder put a fantastic program together when Kyle went through. He had long-term projects he had to work on. He had posters, he had tests, he had homework. When Alex went through his program, you could tell it was significantly different. It was very downsized. There was no, the children weren't being held accountable for doing anything. And I'm sorry, when it comes to math, you have to do it every night. You, if you want to learn a language or you want to learn how to play a musical instrument, it's just like math. If you don't practice it, you're not going to learn it. I think this new math program, I don't know if this year's different, but last year, the idea of giving the kids problems to solve and then after they attempt to solve it, then teaching them how to actually do it, doesn't make any sense at all. It's like handing a book to a kindergartner and seeing if they can read and then explain to them how to do the alphabet and how to put words together. I just think we've lost the idea of what poor learning is. The children don't know how to multiply, divide. They don't know how to multiply, divide, add and subtract. How are they going to learn linear equations and all of that? I, I, I don't want to speak for other children, but I know there are a lot of Botel students that are struggling over a regional right now because of the lack of education that they just received here. And I think the state testing scores show that. And then, I don't know, there's stuff a little bit more time. This is just another thing. And again, these are things that have been around my head for years. They were expressed in my, it's on my exit interview, but when, at the end of the year, the surveys, I did express these things. I know the school cares a lot about the emotional beating of the children and I think they should. But I feel like the emphasis on that has gotten out of control. I feel like we're not seeing the forest for the trees. So much time and energy is being put into that. And I feel like that is being taken away from the academics of the school. I think by setting a great example, the teachers, the staff and the administration can teach the children a lot just by setting a good example. But I think some of the, that have been taken into account. I know we were reached out to at one point. There was some sort of program going to go on about recognizing, I don't know exactly what it was, Asian Americans or something of that nature. It wanted to know my daughter wanted to be part of that. That would have mortified her to be pointed out to by the rest of her friends to say, we're including you. This inclusiveness, we're including you. Though you are different because you're Asian, we want you to know we're including you. And I, I, I think the children at this age just want to be friends. They want to be kids. They don't want to be identified for having this learning disability or this developmental disability or this ethnicity or this religion. I think the emphasis needs to move away from that and let the children deal with that later in their lives because they will. If you just accept them for what they are and stop pointing it out, I think it's better for them.
Would anyone else like to, Jessica?
Three questions. When will the state scores be available to the public? Were reading groups being taught to our most vulnerable population who need assistance with reading by specials teachers and I mean art and music teachers from that cert? And when will the board respond publicly to the issues in the exit survey?
Is there anyone on Zoom who wants to comment? Yeah, just. If you do, just please go in the chat and let me know if you can hear me. Thank you. Is there anyone else or anyone on, online? Roger?
Just real quick, it doesn't sound like you're answering any questions. Is that kind of how it goes here?
So it's, public comment is just comments?
I would just say one thing that can sum quite a bit up of what's been on my mind for a while, but I haven't been impressed with the multi-age classrooms and my daughters only had that since she started here. She was like the first class to go through that. We still have my son's vocab book from, he graduated four years before her. And it's got, we, we keep notes in it still. It's a, you know, a little black book and it's got a word and then almost a whole paragraph of a definition of that word. And she was sent home like yesterday or the day before with vocab. And it's one line, the word and then one line of like, whatever the definition, but you've got to cram it into this. So there's a, I can bring that in to give you guys a visual, but I saw that it's just black and white of the differences between four years ago versus now. I've been asking for homework for her more often. I never really had to ask for my son, who was four years before. I always had homework and now, and all through these years, she's had hardly had any homework. And the math homework has been two problems basically a week. Like on Monday, she'll have two math problems and that's it. And I've asked the teacher, can we get more math problems? That's the only way you learn math is trying and failing and trying and failing and trying and failing, then you get it. But I, I don't know, I'm not a teacher, but that's what I would assume. And the, the teacher said, it's not my, I can't give more homework back. I'm not allowed. So they've privately given you other things to supplement, but it's, it's no required anything from the school. So I was, so I just wanted to find out that.
Yes, Sally? Do you want to use the mic, please?
Ask you, if you'd be kind enough for the sake of the audience and student, for the people to identify themselves when they come up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I should have done that. I could tell you back who they were if you want, if you'd like. I know that Paige spoke for Erica McLeary. Kim Luciano spoke. Peter Crippen spoke. Ken Ludwig spoke. Roger Johnson spoke.
Jessica.
And Jessica Lestorte spoke. I don't think I missed anyone. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your, your comments and your thoughts. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for our regular meeting of September 6th. Everyone should have received that. So barring any corrections, I'd be looking for a motion to. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay. And then on to correspondence. I did want to use this as a time to, to talk to the board about a note I got from Nick Caruso. I had reached out to him to, he is a K representative. I recently attended a, a portion of the, of a online little seminar that, that they did about board roles and responsibilities. That's a seminar that we've had here on the board before. We haven't had it for a while. We have some new members and I'd like to schedule that again for us. I feel like that's a really, that's a really good one. And he is, I asked him for his availability and I want to try to come up with a date that we all could agree on. Thinking that six o'clock on, in, on weekday evenings seems good. Maybe not. You guys tell me what looks good for y'all. Wednesday or, a Wednesday is good for. Okay, Wednesday at 6:30. How does that, how does that look? Let's look at, are we looking at like maybe the, I think I can't do it next week, but maybe the 20th, that's one after that.
The 19th or the 26th.
19th or the 26th. When does that start? Today, tomorrow. Is there another time that would work for you? Monday to Thursday is blocked. Okay, well then we'll take you out of the loop. All right. So Wednesdays are good for you. 6:30 or after is best for you. How about, how about you, Jay? Okay. Well, do we want to try to do the 12th? Is that too soon? Wednesday, I thought that's next Wednesday. Will that work? Yeah. All right. Well, I will get back to him and see if that works for him. 6:30. Okay, then the superintendent's report.
We started off with a thing in terms of our building repairs this year. That's a line item that we pledged at $21,000 for. We've spent $15,000 already. We've had issues with payback. We've had to replace the water heater. And it's just early in the year. I think we'll, you know, hopefully be okay as we move forward, but I want to put that on radar. And then the other area that's, we're going to have to watch carefully is the area of special ed. We've got a couple of new students that will most likely significant increase in tuition and transportation. So just a couple of budget line items that we're going to be watching carefully and I'll keep those places as we move forward. At this point, I don't think there's any need to bring that to board of finance, but we will keep an eye on that. The other thing that's kind of exciting, there have been, the superintendents in Region Seven, we meet on a regular basis. And several months ago, we had talked about how there was, there's been significant teacher turnover in all of the schools. And we were looking at a way that we could not only, you know, do some team building with our own teachers, but within the region. So that as we move forward, we would have people who knew each other a little better as they got together, worked together on curriculum kind of issues. So on Friday, this coming Friday, all of the Region Seven schools, with the exception of New Hartford, have planned a day where the professional development day will take place at Camp Jewel. The morning will be a presenter that will facilitate a number of team building activities. And then in the afternoon, the teachers will split up into groups, grade level groups, and begin to talk about two things primarily. A structure for how over the course of the year, they can plan to get together and work in teams because we have a lot of singletons and, you know, other buildings don't have teams to work with. So we would get them together in groups of teams. And then they would prioritize the areas that they would like to focus on in terms of continuous work on curriculum. Math has been the focus for the last two years as districts, as a region, we've moved to a math program. And that will continue to be part of the conversation, but they will, as it will determine what they believe is, you know, from a teacher perspective, what the, the priority areas are for them to work on when they get together. So that's our plan for this coming.
Great. So you said the Region Seven schools, except for New Hartford, so Barkhamsted, Colbrook and Norfolk will get together. Oh, Heartland. Great. And just to, I just, I just want to make sure I understood properly. So you said that they will make a schedule for getting together throughout the year and they will be building their own PD schedule, is that right? So they're kind of focused or their focus?
In the past, what we have, some of the things that have been done, we've had over the course of the year, every month or so, we would get a sub for a teacher and say all the fourth grade teachers would meet for an afternoon or a day and work together. We've had other things where we, as a region, identified half days during the year that we would all get together. So we just want to let them talk about what were the, some of the things that we've done in the past that worked best. And if they have any ideas about how moving forward, we can structure time over the course of the year where they can be, meet on a regular basis. So that will be part of their conversation. And then when they're meeting, what are some of the priority areas that they want to work on?
Will the middle school teachers or will Region Seven folks be included?
Said they were not going to be able to participate. They were invited.
Is there like, is there a way, is there some avenue for conversation between that group, maybe in the, in the middle school?
We can certainly pursue that. We do meet with Judy and we can ask about that. It's difficult with the schedules and whatnot, but especially after this meeting, if there's at least an opportunity for
Great. I think that would really help with the continuity.
I love the opportunity for the teachers around the region to get together. And I know that the superintendents meet weekly around the region.
We've met every week during COVID. Before COVID, we met once a month. So we've been kind of doing a hybrid. Now we meet in person once a month and then we've been meeting online periodically, but typically at least once a month.
Is there an opportunity for administration to do the same thing around the, the region?
The principals?
Yeah.
Yeah. There are times where we get together, you know, when we, we have email threads and, you know, coordinate. We just met to talk about the upcoming PD.
Sally, you're going to say you can't hear. Yeah. Okay, I'll have a mic. So, since I have the mic now, I don't think I need the mic, but I'll tell you what they, I'll give you a little summary of what she, so Mary Beth was reviewing that the, well, first she said that we had, she was reviewing kind of budget things that might be coming up so that there, we started out with some repairs to the school, that there was an HVAC issue, but things seemed to be on course. Does that, that seem right? Then we should also know that we've had some significant special ed needs that seem, that are under control right now, but that may come up. And, you know, it's something we should keep on a radar. Then she talked about Friday's professional development day would be where the Region School, the Region Seven schools are getting their teachers together so that they could do some professional developments with grade level teachers, you know, people who are kind of in the same boat and, and the people who are moving their students onto Region Seven together. Norfolk, Colbrook and Barkhamsted will be doing that, but New Hartford declined to, oh, and Heartland, which I forgot last time I summarized to. And then they would be talking specifically about a structure for getting together again in the future and about prioritizing the areas that they, they are interested in and they want to make additional progress. Okay, from there forward, I'll, I'll ask people to speak into the mic. Oh, Amy asked something.
I just, I.
Here you go.
I was excited about, about the opportunity for teachers to meet region wide and discuss and kind of collaborate region wide. And I know that the superintendents have done so in the past and I didn't know if there was the same opportunity for administration, principals and whatnot. And I was assured that yes, there is.
Okay. So does anyone else have any questions for the superintendent or we move on to our next item? Okay. So to the principal's report. Oh, I felt a little bit like a game show host. I should be asking you about the behind the curtain.
So you have a copy of the principal's report, just giving you some updates on what's been happening at Botel. Our whole school community got together for our first Good News Gathering. Our pre-kers arrived on the 12th, I believe. I didn't put the date down. Thank you to the PTO for sponsoring our back-to-school ice cream social. Colbrook was also invited and there were just as many unfamiliar faces as familiar ones. So I think that that was a great idea. Last week, on the 22nd, we had open house where our teachers prepared informative sessions for families about the upcoming school year. We noticed that this, you know, the turnout was relatively low for this event. And our staff is discussing perhaps some different structures so we can increase turnout for next year. And we are in the process of giving, implementing, administering, administering our benchmark assessments. And as a staff, analyzing those results to determine exactly what students know and what they need to learn next. You'll see the upcoming events that were, some of which were already mentioned, upcoming PED. The 11th is the hour with administrators. We have fire prevention day, picture day, and another Good News Gathering, as well as the enrollment summary below. Dr. Yacavelli asked me, moving forward, to include you on a communication that I deliver weekly to the staff called the Monday Memo. I let her know that I had some concerns with delivering that to you each week because we give specific information about students and staff that, you know, I, I tend to, that's intended specifically for staff and I don't want to compromise any privacy by sharing this beyond the school community. So just so you are aware of the type of communication that is being sent out, there are two examples of recent Monday Mentos with, you know, personal information. there are two examples of recent Monday memos with, you know, personal information is blocked out. But if you have any questions about what this communication is for, looks like, feel free to ask. Each Friday, I elicit from staff members items to be put into the Monday memo. And basically it's, you know, three big buckets, well, four. Celebrations, upcoming dates on the horizon, and just informational nuts and bolts, as well as a little five minute PD video or article. And that goes on weekly, just to cut down on the number of emails that you send in a school, which as, if you're an educator, so this is a form of communication that has worked. Questions?
You mentioned that you're in the midst of the, the star, is it the star assessments?
Star and other benchmark assessments that we give.
What are the timetables for when you find the, the results for things like that?
Yeah. The star is, the results are immediately ready. Then there are other benchmark assessments that require teachers to deliver and score them manually. So what typically happens is every fall, winter and spring, we administer what's called universal screens to track students' progress. And then we meet as teams to discuss that progress, make recommendations, determine if students need additional academic support, and if so, what the goals are surrounding those. So that's what happens three times a year with those assessments.
So I know during, it was during COVID that those were, some of those assessments were halted, right? Or wasn't there some, or maybe it was the common core?
The year of COVID.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then there was a wrinkle for code for when common core was rolled out too, right? I'm just trying to remember the, the timeline of things.
Well, the year we all went home, we had no smarter balanced assessment than we had it the next year, right?
But it was used for a different purpose. It was just very high level.
Yeah.
For the state. So the second, the second year of COVID, they did administer the test, but it was just used for the state, for the state to determine where schools were. Different versions of school that year. They were hybrid, they were in person, they were totally remote. And so these scores, we did get individual student scores, but there was no real.
Like aggregate.
The state reporting like we would typically get that, you know, would categorize or rate or compare schools to other schools. We are back now into the regular assessment and, but while all that was going on, we continued to do all of our benchmark assessment. And usually November, December, Lauren does a review of assessments and where we are with grade levels mentioned coming up. Do you have an idea of when that might be this fall?
I would say by November or December.
So then we report out those, you know, schools to the board. And then there are repeated winter assessments. And then those are used for teachers to look at, to determine instructional plans for individual kids as well as whole group. And then we use, you know, that information moving forward for all of our curriculum decisions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the principal before we move on?
Was the, the meet and greets better attended or?
Yes. The meet and greet was very well attended and our end of the year celebration of learning is always very well attended. So the difference between those is open house is a parent only night. And I think my, you know, we're theorizing that it's difficult to find childcare. And when you can bring your kids to school, it, you know, increases attendance. So that's one of the things that we're looking at.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to our standing, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. Personnel negotiations.
So our personnel, sorry. Personnel subcommittee met to discuss the appropriate process to follow in response to the exit survey allegations and other assertions presented to the board during recent public comment and public Q and A sessions. We closely reviewed information provided by attorney Conrad Alsing from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education and board attorney Mark Somaruga. We also examined the grievance procedure outlined in the teacher contracts. Since none of the former faculty or staff, including Rachel Nsillo, who is the union representative, had availed themselves of the grievance procedure in their contracts, the attorneys determined there is no role for the board to play and advised us to take no action. However, the committee shares the concerns expressed by community members who address the board regarding teachers' comments and recommends that the full board meet with administrators to discuss these concerns during executive session.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that report. Do any board members have questions for that?
I have just some outlines. I wasn't able to, didn't attend that meeting. Outlines of just different things that I had. Is that something that, just in pieces of information that I have collected personally, just doing my due diligence and following up on the complaints? Is there a way that we can make copies of that so everyone can read that prior to, or not, not prior to, but?
Well, my understanding of what the, what, what the, what the attorney advised was that we don't have a grievance. And our, our board is to, is supposed to work as a board available for hearings. A hearing hasn't been brought before us. So I think that the, the right place to discuss those things would probably be in, you know, a conversation with our administrators, with how to move forward and, you know, with the things that we understand and what, you know, what we would like to see and how things should go and to, to discuss the, how it all has gone down. And, you know, what we want to look like going forward and what are the, what are the, you know, what do we want our, our little school to be able to do, to say that it does and to be proud of and to figure out the best path forward? So it seems to me like that's the place that we, the place to look at that is probably in, you know, our, our specific discussions with our administrators.
And the community's open hour with the administrative, hour with the administrators too. But that's.
Oh, that's.
Open forum. But we did consider and together look as, as a subcommittee.
Would you like this?
Can you hear me? As a sub, as a subcommittee at all of the information that was provided by community members, former, former teachers, board members that collected items.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, our curriculum and technology committee did not need finance. Finance committee did not need policy.
So our policy subcommittee met at 4:30 today. And so we are going to be doing our second read of policy 4118, which is the school drug and alcohol policy. That's, that's on a unfinished business. So we'll do that in a little while. But we also did a first read of policy 6159 and policy 4214 and policy 6171. We decided to send towards a second read of the committee. So it will be distributed and we'll do a second read in the November, the November full board meeting, the individualized education program and special education program policy, the drug and alcohol testing for school drivers. And we decided that the special education policy, which is 6171, is redundant within the individualized education program. It's got special education program. So we'll just be submitting two policies, having had a first read for the second read for the November meeting. And then we've also assigned the next three policies, goals for the public schools, parent involvement and charging policy for our December subcommittee meeting. So we reviewed it and so the first read for the board is at the next. Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you. You guys are working, working through a lot of stuff. Appreciate that. Health and wellness.
Health and wellness met this morning. We had a quorum, but we didn't have the school administrators with us and we needed their input as far as a new policy, well, an existing policy that needs revision. Cassandra Dillard, the nurse, brought forward the, our existing life policy, which was, I think from like 2005. It's very old. And Mary Beth has provided me with a revised policy that came, distributed in 2012. So the health and wellness committee, I tabled it. I'm going to call a special meeting to meet before the next policy meeting so that we can review our existing life policy and make recommendations and then send, approve that policy, send it to the policy standing committee for review to then be sent to this board for, for vote. So that was pretty much all we talked about at health and wellness. So I'll have another meeting before our next, our November meeting.
Okay, great. Okay. So that's pretty much it. Great. Communications. So communications didn't meet this time around. Shared services.
We did. We did meet and there was really nothing that we discussed more like Mary Beth said, it was just the turnover of teachers and how they handled that and replaced that. And the issue with Paris is the classroom leaving. And we discussed pay rates and how it works in each district with budget for keeping them. They recognize that they, they are the more underpaid staff and that's the trouble in keeping them. But that's really all we discussed is more the turnover and how pretty much every district has fulfilled a position that was open.
Thank you. PTO goes back to Ginger. I'm going to be so good at Thanksgiving, passing the.
Okay. PTO met like three weeks ago. The meeting is, the next meeting is tomorrow. So any parent, teachers or community members that want to attend at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria downstairs. The agenda I know for this tomorrow's meeting is the Spooktacular. So if anybody has any great ideas, wants to volunteer, wants to help out, you've got, you know, you're ready, willing and able, feel free to come and volunteer to help give our families a great Spooktacular experience. Cause that's a great tradition here. We do have the butter breads fundraiser running right now. So if you know of a student who's selling them, please, they're delicious. There's not just butter breads. There's also like trail mix and mugs and popcorn and all sorts of stuff. Just helps the PTO fund some events on for this year.
And the motel merch.
The motel merch. Oh gosh, how could I forget? We are also selling a BES Botel school merch. I know that there's flyers up at the office. And if you follow any of our social media pages, you can find the link to order. And they look really great. There's really awesome eagle on it. Anything else I'm missing? That's pretty much it.
I noticed though, that I believe that the schedule has been changed to be the first Wednesday monthly at 6:00 PM. So that's a change we have to make on our, on our little green page here. PTO is meeting on Wednesday. The, the first Wednesday. Yeah, it's the first one tomorrow. Okay. School safety. Second Tuesday hasn't happened yet, so you haven't met. And the board of finance. It's, is it tonight? It's next Tuesday and I actually think it was canceled. Yeah. So, but there's something I wanted to talk about at, about the board of finance. Oh, wait, it's on our.
It's on our agenda. Yeah.
One of the things I think would be a, a great idea with our board of finance liaison is I'd like to ask Mike Scanners if we could be, if the, if Botel could be added specifically to the agenda each month. I went, I attended the last meeting to talk about the non-lapsing account. And, you know, it just seems like it would be a really good thing to have a regular space on their agenda so that we can share information and things that are going up and just to do more to be, you know, we've been trying to build our relationship. And I think the more we talk and the more, you know, we're available to ask questions or share concerns and those sorts of things, I think that would be really good. So I don't know that that, if that'll, how that'll go, but that's, I think that would be a nice thing to ask. So I'm hopeful that you're okay with that, since you're the liaison that, you know, you might be there to, it might be asked to, you know, relay information and that sort of thing. Okay. All right. And the that committee has a. Okay. All right. So moving on to unfinished business. That's a good segue to the non-lapsing account. So at the last board of finance meeting, the Botel was brought up because we have had in the past this non-lapsing account, which allows us to put, I think by statute, you can, you can have a non-lapsing account that allows you to put up to 2% of the budget into a non, into an account that can then be kind of rolled over and used for projects for the school in the future. By our agreement with the board of finance, it is actually 1%. And it is specifically noted that it be used for, for capital improvements. It is, or it has been apparently a, like a one-year renewal kind of thing. And so what we wanted to do or what, what the intention of the last meeting was, was to reinstate it and to make it perpetual, perpetual agreements. So the board of finance voted in favor of that. And I just, I wanted to have a vote here at our meeting too, that we are in favor of going into that agreement. Does anybody have any questions about that non-lapsing accounts? I know sometimes people get confused about how that works or it's only money that is unexpended from our budget. So it's not like it's an additional amount of money that comes from the town. It's, it comes from the unexpended amounts of the, of the school budget. Oh yeah, actually. So in, I think, I wonder if I saw that paper with me. And, and looking over things over the last couple of years, I got interested in knowing how, how much had we, you know, had unexpended amount did we have from our budgets over the last so many years? And I think it was, was it 10 years that I looked back? And it was like, it's a significant amount of money. It's like $622,000, I think it was.
That has been given back to the town.
Well, that was unexpended from our budget. So, so it's not like they hand us a pile of cash and we spend it down. It's more like, you know, it's like an accounting thing. But so those, those were unexpended funds from our, from our. Now, there have been years when we have needed more to support the school than is in our budget. And the, and the town has always been fantastic about, about providing that. So for instance, if we have, suddenly have, I, I just remember one particular year, we suddenly had a big, like a hundred thousand dollar bump in our special ed costs because of an outplaced student. And that was not in our budget. So the town was, you know, covered that cost. But it was interesting to see that even when you took into account, like, you know, what we needed above and what we, what we returned below, that we still, you know, I feel proud that our, you know, budget, that we've done, you know, I feel like we've done a, a good job of trying to stay to that line and to be really conscientious about the money that is spent and to return it when it's not. So, you know, and I think that the board of finance recognizes that and, and they didn't seem to have any hesitations with that, you know, with the non-lapsing account.
So the changes from the state allowance are that it's 1% instead of 2% and that there's a, it's to be used, I'm sorry. So the changes to the Norfolk agreement is from the statewide allowance is that it's 1% rather than 2% that there's, we're supposed to use the funds for capital improvements only. Is there also still that clause, and I'm not sure I'm using the right word, that if there are expenses that are not capital improvement, we can appeal to the board of finance for that money to be spent on something other than capital improvement? Is that still?
I think so. I, I don't remember if that's a written clause, but it is the true that whatever we spend that money on, we have to go to the board of finance to get approved. So, you know, it's not just like we have that money in an account, we could just spend it when we want to. For any given, any given project, we have to go to the board of finance specifically and say, this is the thing we want to spend the money on. this is the thing we want to spend the money on, you know, and they have to approve it at that point. And so I'm assuming that in that process would also be included that even if it's not specifically for the capital, the capital improvement. I don't recall that phrase though, in the, in the letter.
There was no written follow-up. It was on the agreement, the one agreement that was signed off on. I don't know if Mike intends to send us a formal agreement to sign again.
Yeah, I, you know what, I'll ask for that. We should have that formal agreement.
Support that, you know, some of the special ed costs are more than we had anticipated. We've had the flexibility to use that for just more than capital.
Okay, thank you.
And Amy, the, the money, it just, whatever we don't, like whether it's 1% or 2%.
Whatever we don't expend, it goes back into the general fund. So if it was something like a special ed cost, it, it would really be up to the town, they would want to go into the non-lapsing fund money to help balance that if needed or if it would come out of the general fund. But it's basically the same pot of money that is the town money whether it comes out of non-lapsing or the general fund, they would cover, so.
And the, and the truth is that special ed costs, we really have to, as you know, cover.
Right.
Anyway, so, yeah. Okay, thank you. Somehow I think that having the microphone is making me speak quieter. I, I don't know. Afraid of it a little bit, I think. Okay. So we need a vote on if we are willing to enter back into our non-lapsing accounts agreement with the Board of Finance.
And if we enter back into this non-lapsing account agreement with the Board of Finance as agreed at the most recent Board of Finance meeting.
I'll second that. Great. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Now, for the second reading of policy 4118.232. Do you want to talk about it?
Sure. So as it is, we have the only change from the actual printed version that everyone has distributed. It's the thing on the last page about CBD products. So everything else in here is what passed through the first read. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about the policy as it stands?
This is, this is a K policy.
Yes.
So who crossed off the CBD product?
Oh, we did. And it's optional. On, on K, that list was optional. And so that, that was something that I think we may have even done in the subcommittee meeting before, before the first read.
All right.
Any other questions?
I think we did talk about that in the meeting, the general meeting too.
Yeah, I think it's been.
This one's gone, a comment gone, a comment gone.
Yeah, so apologies for not having exact details memorized.
Yeah. I'm, I move that we accept this policy. All those in favor? Oppose, motion. Thank you. Then we are moving into our new business section. I would like to ask for a, a motion to go into executive session for administrative review.
We go into executive session for administrative review, second.
Okay, all those in favor? I think that we'll, again, leave the room to do this. And we will not be asking the superintendent and principal to, to join us at this time. But if you could stay close by. Let's turn this off, right? I have to pause the recording, correct?
Right.
Oh wait, I was unmuted. No, we ended executive session and we.
Session, she seconded the whole hall.
All right, so I was right at the time, so I'm sorry. Ending executive session was Ginger and John.
Correct.
And then we haven't yet adjourned the meeting.
Yeah, we just did.
Who was that?
Ginger and Donna.
Again, same shit.
Ginger and Donna.
Donna, John, Donna.
Ginger and Donna.
All right, stop.